At A&amp;A Paving, we believe in providing customers with quality products supported by excellent service, all at a fair price. We do what we say and we stand by our work. A&amp;A Paving brings you two decades' worth of solid asphalt paving experience and a solid reputation in the pavement, construction, repair, and maintenance industry. We provide commercial and residential seal coating, asphalt paving, and repair services for Cape Cod and southeastern Mass. A&amp;A Paving, 508-540-4944. Founder Abraham Penn taught a valuable lesson that has been part of a tradition since 1919 when he said, "I'd rather make a friend than make a sale." For more than ninety years, Puritan has been making friends as a unique, family-owned company right here in Cape Cod. At Puritan Cape Cod on 199 Main Street, as well as Chatham, Mashpee, and Hyannis, you'll find the latest in men's and women's clothing, as well as ski and tennis equipment, and much more. Puritan Cape Cod, 548-0116, or puritancapecod.com.
The order, uh, order of selectmen has just returned from executive session, in which we have voted to remand the case between Surag versus Tana Falmouth, with a hearing to be held on June 1st. I'll invite the public to join us in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Under our first item of business, as I mentioned last week very briefly, and a little more detail tonight, Edward L. Marx Jr. died Monday, May 11th. Mr. Marx was born in Falmouth, the son of Edward and Mary Lawrence Marx. He graduated from Lawrence High School and played on Falmouth's last state championship football team. He was a member of the Falmouth Fire Department for twenty years, serving as captain for four years, and was a masked electrician. He also drove a school bus in Falmouth, a job that garnered him great appreciation from his young passengers. Mr. Marx was a selectman from 1991 until 2003. He had served on the Finance Committee for eleven years, the last to his chairman, and was a town meeting member for many years. Mr. Marx retired after having major heart surgery in 2003. When he retired, the selectmen voted to name the historic former Falmouth Poorhouse on East Main Street, built in 1769, after him. He was also awarded the Falmouth Historical Society's Heritage Award in 2003. As Troy Clarkson said, "He was the consummate public servant, constantly working on projects to make the town a better place by honoring its past." If we could take a moment just to remember him and give us our best wishes to his family. Thank you. Do we have any other announcements? Do we have any public comment from anyone who'd like to speak on something that is not on our agenda? Announcement, person?
Tomorrow's election day, so any viewing public should make sure they turn out to vote.
Polls are open from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. We do have our six different, or eight different polling places, and encourage you all to vote. Any other public comment? We'll move on to our minutes of the meetings. The regular meeting minutes from May 11th, public session. Any corrections? Yep.
One, Mr. Chairman, Vice Chairman, on page six, our appointment of members to the Conservation Commission. If you look underneath of the motion, it should say, "And Jamie Matthews to the unexpired alternate position."
Okay, so have the term alternate before, so it's the unexpired alternate position.
Correct.
Yep, okay. Any other changes? I'll entertain a motion to accept the minutes as amended.
So moved.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none. Mr. Patterson's seconds may be very quiet tonight, he has a short vote, can barely be heard, so we'll make sure to pass those on. We do have some minutes that need to be changed for the executive session, so I'm going to hold off on approving those tonight. Under summary of actions, first we have some licenses. The first are approved one-day wine and malt liquor licenses for the reunion of summers past Marina Park, Saturday, July 11th, 2015. We do have the applicant here, if they want to speak on the issue, Mr. Cross.
Do I need to?
I don't think so, but if you want to tell us again what is happening, so you can have your own public advertisement right now.
At the podium, please. Thank you, for the TV.
How are you tonight? I'm Dawn Cross, and I'm representing Reunion of Summers Past, along with my cohort, Tim Smith. And we're doing a fundraiser for mass fallen heroes, which are veterans who have died in the wars. And we're supporting them and their families through this fundraiser, which is our third season now, and it's been going well, so we're looking forward to it, and that's about it.
So July 11th?
Yes, July 11th.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
Move for approval of the one-day wine and malt liquor license for the reunion of summers past at Marina Park on Saturday, July 11th.
Second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Congratulations. Next is a one-day wine and malt liquor license for the Craft Beer Festival at the Cape Cod Fairgrounds. This is Saturday and Sunday on September 26th and 27th. Do we have anyone from that organization here? Do we have a motion?
Okay, I move to approve a one-day wine and malt liquor license for the Craft Beer Festival on the Cape Cod Fairgrounds, Saturday and Sunday, September 26th and 27th, 2015.
Second. Only piece of discussion I will notice is if you looked at the form from the review of the committee, there are a number of events going on in town that day, but they are spread out fairly widely throughout town, so we may have a number of people in town then.
Initially, when I looked, I didn't see that we had any fire or police department, okay, on this, but it came to us belatedly.
Yes. Next are under administrative orders. First is to vote and sign the loan closing interim financing documents for the wastewater.
Point of horror.
Yep.
I think we have to vote.
If we not vote on that, I'm so sorry. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Administrative orders, to vote and sign the loan closing interim financing documents for the wastewater and water projects. Mr. Suso.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have Finance Director Jennifer Petit and Treasure Collector Patty O'Donnell as well, joining us this evening, and able to answer questions and make some comments.
Jennifer.
Good evening. There was a memo that was in your packet. We are in the process of closing on the interim loans for the water treatment plant in the Little Pond Source Service area and the water wastewater plant expansion. These interim loan notes will work a little differently than they do bond anticipation notes. We're borrowing through the Mass Water Pollution Abatement Trust, and, you know, as I said in my memo, the long-term financing is zero percent and two percent. So for the short term, we'll borrow through them, and the way that it will work is we don't borrow the money until we actually spend the money. And so it's, there'll be a process of signing off on the payment requisitions, it will go to the trust, and then they'll wire the money to us. And that's all on the short term for the next year or two, but this will cover us for a little while. And it's at a .09% interest rate annually. Any questions?
Rebecca?
On the town school recreation field demands?
That's on the next issue.
We'll do it on the next one there. I didn't, okay. So we just go ahead with this vote, not including that?
No.
Okay.
Jennifer, could you just go over a little bit what happened last week with the nearly $4 million that came through?
Absolutely.
It's not really related to this, but it's a good news piece.
Yeah, absolutely, and I just want to let you know, we're going to pass along the paperwork and where they have the stickies that sign here, you know, if you remember, we did this in December, but it was this big, now it's only this big, that's the good news. So I'll just, they'll be moving that along the table, and then there'll be a vote at the end, and I can talk about that in a second. It asked for the clerk of the board to sign it, but the vice chair certainly can sign that, because I don't think you have a voting clerk, so that will be fine, I just wanted to mention that. Yes, we received notice from the Mass Water Pollution Abatement Trust last Friday, that we received approximately three and a half million in environmental justice loan forgiveness, principal forgiveness. And it's about two and a half million for the water treatment plant, about almost $900,000 for the Little Pond Source Service area, and about $150,000 for the wastewater treatment expansion. And the way it will work is we just don't pay back, you know, the trust for that, for that principal forgiveness, which is great news.
All right, do we have any other questions on the loan closing or the interim financing? Yep.
Is it minor, nit, but in the memo that you sent, I don't know whether it's important or not, it said on the March 18th?
That's today, I mean, May.
It should be May, right?
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, absolutely.
I don't know whether it's...
Good catch.
Well, not only if it's significant.
So do I have a motion to approve the loan closing interim financing?
For wastewater and water projects, so moved.
Second. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? The ayes have it.
And, thank you, and I will forward the, there's a vote that will be put into the minutes, that's what, at the end, right there, so I just wanted to let you know, so thank you.
Well, thank you very much, Jennifer.
Thank you.
You said there's one page that had the clerk?
Yes, it should be at the yellow tab, yeah, the yellow tabs, at the application.
Oh, she's real stack.
What is she saying to do with it? Just let that one go?
So don't? So just the red?
Well, we're signing, Mr. Suso, maybe you can introduce the CPC funding requests in Tana Falmouth?
Certainly, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. The board will recall that annually, the CPC accepts applications for community preservation funds for the various categories of eligibility. We attended the, their annual meeting in which they summarized the application process and the preferences, the forms, et cetera, et cetera. And in furtherance of that, there is an application, the deadline is the first week of June, and we have several potential projects which could go forward to the CPC for their consideration, similar to the process that we've passed in, followed in past years. And we have a summary of those projects that we're making available to the board, and I'll pass down a copy of those, if I may, Mr. Chairman. And also defer to my colleague Heather Harper for any comments that she may have on those. We would be asking for the board's authorization to prepare and file applications for those multiple projects, recognizing that funds are limited and that there's no guarantee of funding. But as has been the case, as I noted in recent years, the town wants to step up and make reasonable applications and request for consideration for those funds respectfully from the committee, and follow their lead accordingly.
And I notice a number of them are now recreation ones now that the rules have changed for the CPC.
Correct.
I think, certainly I think it would make sense for the public to hear what the projects are that we're planning to put forward, but Rebecca, did you have a question first, a specific one, or?
No, I just, I just wondered what the amount with the town school recreation field, the one that is blind, that was...
It goes on to the next line, it's part of the use needs assessment?
Mm-hmm.
Assessment. So I'll go ahead and read them, and if there are further questions we want to have, we can get some more information from Mrs. Harper about this. So the first is a complete irrigation system for the South Country Club, a cost estimate of around $300,000. Bike path extension design and bridge replacement for $175,000. Shiverick Pond Gateway Path Environmental for $10,000. The Sandwich Road Fields Basketball Court fencing for about $17,000. Then a town school recreational field demand use needs assessment, and that's in the range from somewhere between $5,000 and $40,000. The Goodwill Park Playground Replacement for $102,000 to $172,000. The North Falmouth School Playground for $80,000 to $150,000, and to replace the Bristol Beach Gates for almost $16,000. We do have a packet of further explanation, did anyone have any specific questions on those?
No.
Yes, as your liaison to the Community Preservation Committee, I don't know that you got the feedback or not, but they're going to be requesting that you use Viewworks to prioritize the recreational projects, and just so you know, to make sure you provide that documentation in support of your applications.
Thank you.
Do we have a motion to support these town CPC funding requests?
So moved.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? The ayes have it.
Thank you.
Next item is to approve the Solid Waste Advisory Committee application for Mass DEP Recycling Dividends Program Grant. We have a representative from the Solid Waste Advisory Committee who's going to make a report to us.
Thank you very much for hearing us.
If you'd just introduce yourself, our secretary.
Linda Davis and I have, in the last few months, been to DEP meetings about this grant. They are on their knees begging towns to apply for it, so I couldn't turn it down. I have never seen so many, so much paperwork and so many blanks to fill in. This is the second year of the grant. Falmouth did not apply last year. But there are things that we could certainly use, and so the Solid Waste Advisory Committee has volunteered to do the paperwork. And this grant, unlike anything I've ever known, I must be behind the times. But they, you apply for it through something called Retrack Connect. They won't take papers, they will only take blanks filled in on computer things. And there's only one person in town with a secret word who knows the code to that, and that is John Lyons. So my plan is, when we get all the information he will leave, he can do this. All this has to be done by the 10th of June, so we are working under a deadline. I don't think you're interested in knowing all of the prerequisites the town has to have. I guess what I will say, though, is, first of all, Massachusetts ships out of state a million tons of trash that it doesn't have the disposal capacity to get rid of in incinerators and landfills. And the state does not want to build anymore, they've built a cap on that. People don't want them in their backyards. Instead, they're trying to whittle down the waste stream by taking things out of it that can be used or recycled. And they are pushing the towns to do that through grants like this. You do this for us, we'll give you a few bucks to do something that you might need to do to do that for us, like buy a dumpster, or... There are things like programs in the schools and things that we won't apply for because that would involve salaries after the two years of the grant are up. But there are plenty of things we could apply for. So, Linda, do you want to talk about some of those things?
Thank you. Linda Davis, and I'll be brief. The, I mean, the general overview is this. We're recognizing everywhere, not just in Massachusetts, in the United States, in the Western world, and everywhere, is that we are producing tremendous amount of waste and trash, and we, it is costing us to get rid of that. And as we begin to find more materials that are toxic, dealing with, that becomes another issue. As a result of our, particularly in the West, our sort of lifestyle and behavior, we produce a lot of trash, and it costs a lot of money now to take care of it. The state has begun, began last year under the Sustainable Materials Recovery Program, to encourage municipalities to assess how they're dealing with their trash, their recyclables, their hazardous waste, and to offer some incentives for them to do better, basically. And so this is what we're looking at. And this program will continue, I mean, the offering of grants that started last year is going to continue into the future, so that as we are looking at what we need right now, we're also planning for applying for grants for next year. And so that gets us to think a little bit more about what we're doing, and also assess, give us the opportunity to assess and document so that we can get more money. And it's our money, as you know. This year, there are nine different categories. We've spoken with some of the movers and shakers at the DEP, and clearly, two of the grants that we're going to apply for are these. One of them has to do with carpet and mattress recycling incentive, and this comes at a perfect time. We, at our transfer station at the waste management facility, as you know, we take mattresses for a fee, and they in turn get hauled away somewhere. And, and the incentive here is to actually encourage recycling on the part of either the manufacturer or a recycler, as opposed to taking these and disposing of them in some landfill or something else. And so this grant that we are applying for includes a roll-off or a container vehicle, a container into which we put our mattresses in after they're dropped off at the waste management facility, and that we work directly with a recycler. And that recycler will be paid for by the state. So we will get two things, we'll get up to $7,500 for a container for the mattresses, number one, and number two, we will get a recycler to come and pick those up, and that, and that charge will be the state's responsibility for two years. And then, of course, you want to know after the end of the two years what happens. Well, we get to keep the container, number one, and number two, there's a good chance, according to the state, that there will be a continued financial incentive to deal with a recycler on these mattresses. So that's basically that grant. There are other grants, and I hope in the future we'll be able to apply for them. We need to assess things such as recycling assistance in the schools, I think we really need to take a look at what we're doing there and how we can do it better, there is money for that, but that's for next year. The one that the state says we must, must apply for is targeted small-scale investments. And basically, that's asking for an amount of money, could be up to $5,000, to help us in a variety of areas. We could get a cardboard compactor, we could use the money for educating the public in certain areas, we could use it for a variety of measures at the waste management facility, or just updating people about what they need to know in dealing with their trash. So that's basically it. Bruce Brazier, our chair, has spoken with Mr. Jack, who certainly is supporting this, he said, "Great, you know, fill it out, get it done, hand it in, and we'll see what we can get."
Any other questions from the board?
Any questions?
I move to approve the Solid Waste Advisory Committee application for Mass DEP Recycling Dividends Program.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Congratulations. Thank you very much, Linda Jenny.
Thank you, I have one question. Do we need to go to the finance committee or need any? Oh, okay, so there you go, thank you.
Good report. Thank you.
Next item is to vote to approve the Cape Cod Commission's scope of services for the 31-acre study, this is Route 151, North Alice Highway.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, some remarks from Assistant Town Manager Heather Harper.
Sure, this is a project that's been in the works for several months now. The chairman of the board of selectmen created an informal working group, including one other member of the board, was here, Ms. Maria, the town manager, myself, and the planning staff, to discuss how the town might develop a vision for the 31 acres on the corner of Route 151. What I have for you is still a draft study, so ultimately, what we'll ask before tonight is to approve the scope of services, subject to the town manager's final approval, we're still working out some of the details with the commission. We invited Paul Nedzwicki to meet with us during one of those discussions, just really high level, what are the, what's the potential for that property in the long term? And it was clear that the commission has the tools and resources that can help the town, both with the community consensus building, with the visualization, as well as the market analysis. So they will be introducing that to the town, very third-party, at a very high level, what the town may be able to support on that site, what the site may be able to support with community interest, as well as what the market may avail on that location. So this really is a visioning process that will have three community workshops, including a community survey, a community poll, and developing scenarios for the community to provide feedback on. So I think it's going to be a pretty interesting process, there's really no huge stake in terms for the town, it really is an opportunity for the community to participate in a clean slate visioning process. We have met with the developer and owner of the property, and they're supportive of this concept, they understand that this is a town-sponsored agenda, and that their property is the site and locus for that, but certainly, any of the market and community visioned concepts could apply to another location in the community. And you'll see that the title's changed a little bit, it's now referred to as the Olympic Village Concept Study. And that really comes from the planning board, and the vision that's provided in the document really came through the planning board's work on the local comprehensive plan, and their interest in seeing whether a facility that combines recreational uses, aquatic uses, commercial and residential uses on one site is economically viable on that location... uses, commercial and residential uses on one site is economically viable on that location or in the community, and what is the appropriate mix of the commercial, residential, and athletic types of uses. So that's the kind of conversation we'll be beginning, using the commission, basically in a consulting services role, using the tools and resources that they have at no direct cost to the town.
Question. Sue?
Sure, I just wanted to add to what Heather said, because this is an incredibly unique opportunity for the town. And it's based upon that the town's interest in the land, the town, does have a type of option interest that is unique to this particular property. And given that interest, the developers were very happy to have, you know, the input from the town. And it really has turned into, you know, I think, a great cooperative use of, you know, from the commission to the town, to the developers. And I think this is a really good view that the community can have about, you know, what's needed, what they'd like to see. It's an important, important property. And then give the developer those ideas. And on the other hand, we have an open-minded developer to hear all those concepts. So I think it's a, it's great work, great, great, unique opportunity.
Any other comments? Rebecca?
Are we looking at this same 31-acre site that we have discussed at town meetings and about the agriculture permit on this? I mean, is it that same area that I'm picturing in my mind?
So the property is basically at the corner of 28 and 151. There's a sign on it that says "For Sale" currently. The town of Falmouth has a right of first refusal on that property. So at any point the developer chooses to transfer that property, the town has an interest and could take action on that, should it be willing and desiring to do so. So the town has a specific interest in that property. There's a zone on there, seven of the 31 acres has been zoned, Senior Care Retirement District. It's our understanding from the developer that that's simply not a use, that there's a market to support. They have an interest in developing the property, and they came to the town and said, "What would the town support us doing out there?" Because they, one, will need the zoning support, and they know the town has a long-term interest in the property. So we developed this concept to say, "What does the community think might be viable out there?" Ultimately, any change in use will require zoning changes, as you know, requires two-thirds vote of town meeting, so it's a high bar. So they've been open-minded to participate in a community vision, visioning process, to hear from the community about a private property, what the community might envision on that parcel. And it really is akin to a pre-permitting process, which Falmouth has done a little bit with development agreements, where you envision what you'd like to see happen in an area, and you provide the permitting foundation, and hopefully, you attract development that meets what the town's goals and desires are. So this is really lightly treading on that type of a practice.
I just know there's been a lot of discussion about those acres.
There'll be more.
I know we pay a fee to be part of the Cape Cod Commission, so this is a way of using their resources at no additional cost to us. And I think it's a great opportunity. They have many of the same strategic goals that we have in our town, and so it's an opportunity for them to take, "Well, let's just stop and take a look at what we could do with this 31 acre." I think the model might easily be applied to some other parcel in town.
Any other discussion?
I move for approval for the Cape Cod Commission's scope of services for the 31-acre study.
Second. Any further discussion?
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Unanimous? We now need to move to our public hearings. We have a time of our publication of a public hearing for 7:30. This is for the application for new wine and malt package store license, the MPG Corporation doing business as Rapid Refill, 435 Palmer Avenue, Falmouth. This is continued from May 11, 2015, but I'll still read the acre license hearing. And this is hereby given under Chapter 138 of the General Laws, is amended, that MPG Corporation, doing business as Rapid Refill, has applied for a new wine and malt, malt package store license to be located at 435 Palmer Avenue, Falmouth, Mass. Hearing will be held in the Selectmen Meeting Room, Falmouth Town Hall, on Monday, May 11, 2015, at 7:30, and is continued to May 18. For the applicant, please.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. For the record, I'm Laura Moynihan, Falmouth attorney, and I represent MPG Corporation, the applicant licensee. With me tonight is Peter Garrett, here in the audience, who's the principal of that corporation, and Ben Bowlen, who's the intended manager for the license. This is the facility at the corner of Jones Road and Palmer Avenue. It's a current gas station. The wine and beer license was actually issued there originally in about 2006, and it's been licensed for beer and wine since then. This normally would have been a transfer, but the license had lapsed. So procedurally, it requires a new license application before the board. The applicant intends to have the five coolers that were operating under the existing license for this new license, no change in the amount of storage areas. So there's no change in the quantity under the license. The manager, Mr. Bowlen, is here, if you have any questions for him. He's been employed by MPG for five years. He's been the manager of other licenses that the corporation has held in Mashpee and Bridgewater. There's never been a violation under his supervision, and he's been in business for 25 years in this business, and worked in other stores, all with beer and wine. So he, I think, is well-qualified to manage the license. Mr. Garrett is also a resident of, is a resident of the Commonwealth, has other gas station holdings within Falmouth and other areas in Massachusetts. The property is subject to a special permit that's been issued by the zoning board. You have, should have that referral in your file from the zoning administrator of no apparent issues, also from the police and fire department. So with that, we would ask you to grant this license. The hours of operation requested would be 11:00 a.m. to, I believe it's 11:00 p.m. is the cap on the package store licenses now, and 11:30 on holidays. But it's a little difficult to read with the various excerpts from the statute, so... But the maximum hours for closure could be requested regardless. Thank you.
Any questions from the board? Let me just go ahead. Do I have anyone in the audience who'd like to speak in favor of this new alcoholic license? Anyone who'd like to speak opposed, in opposition to this license? If there are no other questions, I'll entertain a motion to close the hearing.
Motion to close the hearing.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. The hearing is closed. And how would the board like to proceed?
Well, I think all of the recommendations have been favorable, as I read each one of them, and I didn't see that there have been any problems there. They agreed to the times to be opened and when to close, so it seems rather clean to me.
Would you like to turn that into a motion?
As I just said that, I always let Susan do the motions.
No, I'm fine.
I move that the application for a new wine and malt package store license for MPG Corporation DBA Rapid Refill be granted for the maximum hours.
A second, then.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Congratulations.
I'd just like to thank your staff as well, and your office, for being extremely helpful processing the license. Appreciate that, Caroline and Diane.
Next item on our agenda are special events recurring. I'll read them off, and if there's anyone who wants to hold one, we can do so. Or if there's someone in the audience who wants to make sure they speak about one, we can do that, too. This first is the Fourth of July fireworks on the Falmouth Fireworks Committee.
I'll hold that.
Okay, we'll hold that one. The Year-End Celebration, East Falmouth Picnic, the East Falmouth PTO, Marina Park, Banshell.
I'll hold that one.
Falmouth Walk, Town Hall Square, honor of Tommy Leonard. Craft Brew Races, Cape Cod, Cape Cod Fairgrounds, Sunday, September 27, 2015. Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve three and four, the Falmouth Walk and the Craft Brew Races, Cape Cod.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Mr. Gillette, would you like to talk to us a little bit about the Fourth of July fireworks? When are you going to have them, on the Fourth of July?
Dutch Gillette, yes. July 4th. I asked for rain date on the 5th. I think it's the 10th. Did I ask for the 10th, just in case we have another bad storm?
Yeah, I think that is, yep.
The usual reoccurring, using the ball field, working out with Heather and all the department heads, and that's pretty much the same recurring in the show.
And this year, there's no interest in having the special tent and...
No, no.
I would just like to know, are you going to guarantee there'll be no fog?
No. No insurance of fog. Rain, yes. Fog, no.
Dependent upon where you were.
Dutch, I would just like to thank you for the many years you've spearheaded this and promoted it, and begged for money to pay for it, right up to the 11th hour before many of these performances. And I know I've enjoyed it, probably virtually, the entire time I've lived in Falmouth. Thanks for all your hard work.
I also want to announce that this year is our 35th Emerald Anniversary, and next year will be the 36th, when Arthur Ratsy, myself, and Lee Adams will be leaving. I'll be 20 years on it, Arthur, 36. I think Lee's like 19 or 22 by the time. I've raised over $1 million for the Falmouth fireworks inside the run committee, and I just can't be responsible for building it. Someone else can take it.
Thank you for your service. It's really incredible. So many lives have been touched and just made happy.
And touching, and talked to Dutch earlier, I would hope that in the future, the board might consider whether the town actually wants to take on at least a part of this in one way of thanking Dutch while the work he has done, as to whether that's something that the town would be interested in adding into a portion of the funding for, just because it is something that so many people do appreciate and does bring people into town, and they really enjoy coming to Falmouth for that. That won't be for this year, but maybe in recognition of the work you've done, we maybe I'll consider that in the future.
Could convince him to stay on longer.
You're absolutely right. The logistics of it is a, has become a nightmare, but I think I'm the only one that understands most of it. The raising of the money is the problem. People don't like to see me coming in the stores. Between June and July 1st...
After July, we're happy to see you.
It's just getting tougher, that's all. And I know there's a lot of other charitable things that people want to give to.
I just want to, I think it really is worthwhile. I know you're going to be around for at least two more shows, and I've committed to that, so thank you. But the amount of knowledge that Dutch has about all of the resources that need to be applied to make that evening come off for how many hundred thousand people, Dutch? Just an incredible number of people. Award-winning, highly-ranked fireworks display across the nation. And the way Dutch really manages that, and he does manage it, he pulls all of the folks together. We have our meeting scheduled for the Thursday beforehand already, and does just a really remarkable job, being both flexible, but knowing where the line needs to be drawn. So I thank you for your great work with all this stuff.
Do I have a motion to approve the Falmouth Fourth of July fireworks?
So moved.
A second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Congratulations.
Thank you, Dutch.
Thank you.
And then the Year-End Celebration Picnic for the East Falmouth PTO was also held at Marina Park.
Is there anyone here? Is there anyone here from East Falmouth? Okay. Then we'll go right on.
Go right on is a motion to...
Yes, because I wanted to speak to someone from the East Falmouth PTO.
So you, you're moving to approve?
Yes.
A second.
So we have motion to approve in a second for the East Falmouth Elementary PTO party on Wednesday, June 24th, at the Marina Park and Banshell. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Unanimous. Next of special events are some new events. Again, if you want to hold any, please let me know. The first is a beach wedding ceremony at Manaut Beach. This is the Pratt-Marchand Wedding on Saturday, September 26, 2015. The next is the use of the beach parking lot. This is for, by Elaine Ellen Bogan for the East Side of Manaut Beach. On Friday, July, we'll hold that. Number three is a beach parking lot use by Karen Payne, Mill Road Lot, Saturday, July 18, 2015. Next item is an acting camp flash mob at the intersection of Luscombe Ave. and Water Street on Thursday, July 2nd, July 2nd.
Hold that.
And the Pedal to Parcels, the 300 Committee Event of the Bike Through Town on Sunday, May 31, 2015. So the ones not held were the beach wedding ceremony at Manaut Beach, September 26th, the beach parking lot, Mill Road Lot, July 18th, and the Pedal to Parcels 300 Committee, Sunday, May 31st.
I move we approve those three.
Second.
Second? Did you say number three was included in that?
Yes.
That's the one I wanted to hold.
I'm sorry, I thought you were holding the East Side of Manaut Beach.
It's the one on the 18... Oh, you're right, number two. Excuse me.
So it's one, three, and five. We're moving approval, and Sam, do you want to give a second?
Sure, second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? As have it. So the Elaine Ellen Bogan Beach at the East Side of Manaut Beach on Friday, July 3rd.
Yes, I just have a question. Maybe Heather can address this, because she sits on the Special Events Working Board. But this is on a very busy Friday, and we're closing the beach parking lot, or at least a major portion of it, for a period of time. Is that going to impact our guests from out of town?
The east side of Manaut Beach parking lot is the Fisherman's Lot, and it's never closed and locked, so it's available to the public. The wedding party will be notified that it's a public lot, and it will be available on a first-come, first-served basis. They may not reserve or hosey spots. When they get there, if the spaces are available, they may use them. If they're not there, they'll need to find someplace else to park. It can be very busy at that location in the evening. So it's really, for the parking, a permit isn't necessary. It's open, public parking.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments on the July 3rd parking? Want a motion to approve?
I move to approve the application on Friday, July 3, 2015.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? As have it. All right, then we have the Brian Switzer's Acting Camp Flash Mob. We have Brian Switzer himself here to explain what's going on.
So this is an unusual request, I understand that, on a very busy time of year. But what I'd like to do, and I spoke to the police about this, is coordinate a four-minute flash mob right in front of Coffee Obsession, right in the center of Woods Hole, with my acting camp. We would coordinate with the bridge being up, so that the traffic would be stopped anyway. The only difference would be that we would hire a police officer to stop the incoming traffic just above School Street, or just below School Street, I should say. So the cars could go down School Street, and cars coming from School Street could go up Water Street. As soon as the bridge came down, we'd have people, you know, watching, we would stop. And the objective is to make a short film, like we've done in the past, that would be out there for the public to see. It will be fun, and I hope... Any questions about it?
I noticed the Village Association is also supportive.
Yeah. I know Catherine was so great, she brought a letter, and I appreciate that. Beth Cold is also on the application. She's on the Business Association and owns Ian right there, and she was all for it, so...
What typically happens when the bridge goes up on Water Street there?
I'm sorry?
What typically happens with the traffic on Water Street when the bridge goes up?
It stops. I mean, it backs up both directions. It depends on the time of day. You know, I sit, I'm down there quite a bit in July. It wouldn't be any different than what would happen normally when the bridge goes up, except that there would be maybe seven-car space to the bridge, from School Street to the bridge, that would not be... that would not be taken up. So it's not that much of a different situation, we just stopped them earlier.
And actually, those seven cars are usually trapped and they can't go anywhere.
Exactly.
This time, they actually won't get to the trap part, but be directed someplace else.
Exactly, so, you know, um, yeah, it's not that much different. And, and actually, cars could go down School Street if they wanted to, so. No, no, there is no difference except for those few cars, correct?
Any other questions?
No, I was, I was just going to ask about the bridge being up. And what would be the issue if you had to do a second one? You didn't like the way the first one, you just put the bridge back up again and...
Come on Rebecca, you know me, we're gonna do it once, we're gonna get it right.
I was just hoping you might say to me, we want the bridge stopped twice.
Well, it stops all day long, so I guess, you know, I could just say, hey, the selectmen said I could do as many times as I wanted to.
I'm glad we held that one so that you could come up and have a conversation, so.
Alright, thanks.
And I'm sure somehow you'll make sure a boat wants to go through the bridge at exactly that time.
Yeah, we know people with boats, Mr. Jones, yes.
Any other questions or comments for the, this one?
I move approval.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None, unanimous, good luck.
I was worried you were gonna approve it, so. Now you gotta do it. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Brian, for what you do for all those kids. Okay, next item of business, we're three minutes behind schedule, that's not too bad. We have a presentation for the commanders of Joint Base Cape Cod and the Executive Director, Colonel Francis McGurn.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen. It's a great pleasure to be here with you today. I believe you may have met my predecessor, General Gary Keefe, who served as the Executive Director until about a year ago. I've taken over for him in my role as Assistant Adjutant General for Major General Rice, the Adjutant General of Massachusetts.
Just if you could, for our recording secretary, say exactly who you are.
Absolutely, my name is Colonel Francis B. McGurn and I'm the Executive Director of Joint Base Cape Cod, Assistant Adjutant General. And, um, I have to keep that stuff straight. I'm really, I'm the least important person here, I'm sort of a pivot man to serve as a basis of collaboration among the commanders who you'll hear from this evening. And I'm just gonna very briefly put a little bit of perspective on Joint Base Cape Cod as we go along here. So, right listed under my name are all the commanders, the Army National Guard, and you probably all know, you know, there's Camp Edwards, there's Otis, there's the Coast Guard Base. Back in 19, excuse me, 2013, the governor renamed it Joint Base Cape Cod to reflect the kind of joint collaboration that we get done there. Representing Colonel Bill O'Brien, he's a traditional guardsman, in other words, he's got a nine-to-five that he does and comes in on weekends and numerous other days. But tonight, we have Major Jeremy Oliver, his training and operations officer. We have Colonel Jim LaFavor, who's fresh back off TDY and rested and ready to go this evening, Commander of the 102nd. Colonel Dave Anderson, our only active-duty tenant on the installation for the Sixth Space Warning Squadron. And representing Air Station Cape Cod and Base Cape Cod is Captain Steven Torpey, and I think you've met Steve, in fact, probably everyone but Dave here before. And this is special because this is the second-to-last public engagement for Captain Steve Torpey as he retires in probably, in three weeks, right?
Three weeks, and I am active duty, but...
And he is active duty as a coastie, sticking to my DOD roots. So, sort of in a spatial sense, it's approximately 22,000 acres, the upper 17,000, 15,000 are devoted to almost exclusively Army training. That little blue dot way up on the top is Dave's Space Warning Squadron, the PAIPAS installation you see. The blue swatch down there is largely run by the Coast Guard these days, the only Coast Guard air station. And the big news, and you'll hear from Jim, is the downsizing and the effort to transfer away much of the holdings of the 102nd Intel Wing, who no longer needs the massive facilities they once did when they were a fighter wing. Can you shoot the next one? So this slide is designed to give you a little bit of a sense of where Joint Base Cape Cod sits in relation to the other military communities here in the Commonwealth. And if you look on the top right, you can see Hanscom and Natick is, it's not a surprise, they're quite large and you can see a pretty significant economic impact coming into the Commonwealth. Joint Base Cape Cod on the bottom right, and then the top two on the left, Fort Devens and Westover Air Reserve Base, very equal in terms of the numbers of personnel and very equal in terms of the economic impact on the communities that surround them and the Commonwealth. And then Barnes is a very small base, it's got our other sister wing, the 104th Fighter Wing out there, and a very small Army National Guard aviation element. These numbers come from the Donahue Institute of UMass and we pretty much stake our bread and butter on it. This gives you a little bit of a spatial sense of what's going on with all those bases. If you start at the top, you can see you could plug Hanscom, Fort Devens, Westover, Natick, and Barnes right into the landmass of Joint Base Cape Cod. Very substantial. This is just in relation to our sort of, our DOD partners in the area. It's the largest training area on the East Coast between Fort Drum and Fort Dix. And it's central to, if not the law enforcement and other federal partners, it's central to the Army National Guard's training efforts throughout the New England area. So I mentioned briefly the Joint Installation Partnership Agreement. You know, joint actually means something within the Department of Defense, it's where we cover and mitigate each other's weaknesses and accentuate each other's strengths and pay each other's bills, based on our means and our capabilities. The way we were operating on Joint Base Cape Cod prior to the governor actually signing the partnership agreement, we were collaborating in a way that gave us joint-like efficiencies. In other words, we, to a certain degree, free-rode on the installation that the 102nd maintained, we partnered in security, and because that made us, we wanted a way to ensure that DOD knew that these efficiencies existed, because as we all know, BRAC has been in the past the enemy of our installations here in Massachusetts. And with budgets the way they are, it's always, we haven't heard there is going to be one, but we hear things like, there's a BRAC-like process in review. So, we wanted to tell our story because we're really proud of the way it works. The Joint Oversight Group is the body that these commanders sit on with other partners from either law enforcement or federal partners, USDA, FAA. Mr. Bud Dunham from the Sandwich Board of Selectmen sits on it, and I would like to just remind you that the offer is always open, we meet on the first Thursday of every month, and any representative or member of this body is welcome to attend. What we do is we have an open session where we discuss the issues of the day that are relevant to, say, the Otis, the Otis, what do they call it, Committee, Donna Cox? Oh, the Civilian Advisory Committee, excuse me. We bring in, we have like guest speakers from the FAA who recently gave us a tour of the Volpe Department of Transportation Research Center. And then the Cape Cod Commission will come and address specific issues germane to their work. So, it's an open forum, it's a great way to find out what's going on on a day-to-day basis, we run through the calendar. And then we have a closed group where the commanders do address the matters of public safety and the various security issues that arise. Tremendous interagency cooperation, you know, that's really the keynote to what I have to say. And we're looking for a little more of that. In the future of Joint Base Cape Cod, we, we know that the United States Coast Guard has realized that they may gain further efficiencies by bringing some of the Boston contingency down to Joint Base Cape Cod. And that's being explored very aggressively. Department of Homeland Security has also taken a hard look at the training venues that currently exist at Joint Base Cape Cod and has seen that as a great opportunity, as that agency is under congressional mandate to consolidate, and the Boston region was picked as one of the regions that they want to consolidate. If you're familiar with what they did at DC, they took an old Army hospital, St. Elizabeth's, and they turned it into a campus that now houses many of the tenant organizations for Department of Homeland Security. And we're the next model for that kind of endeavor. So we're very pleased, because more partners, more collaboration, better efficiency. With that, I am going to turn this over to the commanders, the people that really run this thing, and we're gonna start with Major Oliver, unless you have any questions. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. As Colonel McGurn mentioned, Colonel William O'Brien, he's the Post Commander, he's a traditional M-Day soldier, so he couldn't be here. I am your representative, my name is Major Jeremy Oliver, I'm the Operations Officer for the Post. Next slide, please. Okay, this basically our mission, we're the largest training center in New England with 50,000-plus acres of cotoman area, training area. We also have the upper Cape water supply, as you know, and that's very important, we work that into our mission to make sure that those resources are protected. We provide all the essential training for units and soldier readiness. We also provide training to law enforcement, Department of Homeland Security, Coast Guard, some of our other federal partners. We have two significant projects going on right now, the unit training equipment site is going through a military construction project, also our Regional Training Institute is also getting, receiving kind of a facelift. And altogether, those projects are over $45 million in monies that are coming to the Post. Next slide, please. Some of our range operations, right now, we have a big project going on on our Echo Range, which is basically an automated pop-up type target range, we're making some renovations, improving it, bringing it up to Army standards. Also, in fiscal year 20, Congress has authorized us to build a multi-purpose machine gun range. So we're already making preparations to plan that, and that's nearly a $10 million project. Increase sustainability, there's a couple of years back, there was a federal directive that basically not only was levied against the Department of Defense, but a lot of the other federal agencies, that we need to reduce our footprint for utilities and so forth, and also look into renewable. So as part of that project, we will be building a 6 to 10 megawatt photovoltaic cell system on the Post on the Army side. And as you see in some of the other briefings, we're also, they're also working on similar type projects as well. Security, we're making numerous improvements to our gates and to the infrastructure there. We take security seriously with everything that's going on and the daily news always has all kinds of, shall we say, some kind of disturbing news with a lot of the stuff and lone terror type things, we've really taken that seriously. Not only if we maintain our security structure there, it also helps protect the local community by us being able to maintain our mission to go out and help the rest of the Commonwealth. And we're trying to work on increasing the signage. We do have a problem with ATV bike riders and general trespassing, and we'll address that on the next slide. Basically here, like I just mentioned, we have various trespassers there, you can see some images in the bottom right-hand corner of some of the people that we've captured on some of our imagery. This picture over here is significant, we had a dirt bike rider go by here, and it's hard to see in the photo, but that's a track, right here is a buried mortar round, it's live, and he just missed that by inches. So those are the type of dangers that exist on the Post. So, if you have the opportunity in the future, if you could kind of get that message out to the local residents, you know, it's not just that we don't want trespassers, but it's a huge safety issue as well. Next slide, please. Aggressively tackle the natural resources and try to manage them properly. Matter of fact, today was the first opening day for turkey season on the Post. I was out there all morning observing it, I think they only got like one turkey for the day, but hey, that's, that's okay, you know. We also aggressively manage the deer population, and that does a couple of things. One, safety, by us keeping that population down, there's less chances of the local residents, especially off the Post, having vehicular impacts. The other thing is the Lyme disease and some of the diseases the ticks carry, that helps keep the tick population down as well. Controlled burns, we just had a couple recently. Our goal is gonna be, be able to hit the 600-acre mark or higher. Last year, I believe, we did 1,000 acres. And it's, it's a couple of purposes. One, you know, improve the training lands, also it provides an area for the rare species and it makes it a more viable habitat for them. But the biggest one is reducing wildfire risk. Since the 90s, when we stopped firing artillery and mortars, basically the amount of fires on the Post, the frequency has gone down. And the unintended consequences of that is you start to have the fuel build up. So with us going out there and doing controlled burns and whatnot, we make sure that we keep it at a safe level and we don't take the danger of a fire leaving the Post and endangering the rest of the local community. Next slide, please. Pending any questions, I'll be followed by Colonel LaFavor.
Any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hi, everyone, seems like a year went by pretty quick, I was just up here, seems like nothing long ago. I'm Jim LaFavor, the Commander of the 102nd Intelligence Wing. Basically, I'll just cut to the chase and then I'll give you quick updates of what's happened in the last calendar year. Probably the biggest thing for us is that we, although we had suspected it, it finally became official, that we're losing two of our four federal missions. We're losing our command and control mission, which is called an Air Operations Center, and we're, we're losing a Combat Communications Squadron. We had heads up that this was gonna happen, we've been working, trying to mitigate it by getting another mission to replace it. And believe it or not, I thought I'd be able to say it's official when I, when I was able to brief you guys, but it's still not quite official. But it's 99.99% confirmed that we're going to get a new intelligence mission working in the cyber domain. Other than that, we continue to plug, plug away with finishing some, three major military construction projects, one of which should have been finished four years ago, but we were, we were kind of struck with a lot of bad luck in the contracting realm with that. That's our intel facility. That should be finishing up here. We're actually getting about $20 million worth of equipment installed in it as we speak today. So it's right on the cusp of being finished. And hopefully, in October is the target date, where we will finally turn the, the switch on and be fully functional in our intel mission. We've only been partially functional so far. So that'll be a huge milestone ever since we got word that we're, we've become an intel wing. It just takes a long time. And then we're, we're renovating, that's, this is our intel facility. We're also, I have another military construction project that the general contractor just walked away from. And so, we had thought for a while there, we would, this is what it really looks like, but it's empty inside. And we thought there for a while, we would just have to demo it, because we didn't, we ran completely out of money. Very clever people figured out a way, gotta get someone hired to finish the interior, plus we're gonna do a lot of it ourselves, too. For example, we've gotta do all of our own landscaping. So, I'm gonna bring my wheelbarrow and shovel in one of these days and then fix it up. But that building is very important, too, because that's gonna let us get out of this. If you've ever been on, on the base there, we have a giant hangar that was built in 1955, it's very drafty in the wintertime and expensive to run. We're gonna move out of there finally and then, and move into a much more energy-efficient building right there. So that'll be great news, should happen the end of this calendar year. And then, our, our Air Operations Center is being renovated, it used to be our Fighter Operations. That's being renovated to our Air Operations Center, but that mission is being cut, but they can't stop it until they finish the project, that's just the way government contracting works. But we're gonna transition that building into our new cyber intelligence building with minimal cost. So, and that's gonna be, be done by the end of this year, too. So by the end of calendar 2015, it should be a whole, whole new animal out there at the 102nd. Slide. And I already covered all that. Slide. And, so basically, our, it's, it's another intel mission that we're gaining. And what it is, as far as I can understand it and can talk about it, it's intel, it's collecting intelligence on people who do cyber threats to us, okay? Foreign hackers, foreign hackers' systems, foreign hackers' techniques that they come in. We'll collect intelligence on that through all sorts of means, and then we'll give that to the cyber warfighters, the people who can do all the voodoo, our own hackers. However, it's, it's very synergistic, because we collect intel right now through other, you know, various means, the U2s and Predators and that kind of stuff. Now we're gonna be collecting intel through the cyber domain. And hopefully, it's, it's gonna be around for a long, long time, it'll be a sunrise mission for us. That's pretty much all I got, any questions for me? Alright, thanks. We have Dave Anderson from the small active-duty air force station up there.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, I am Lieutenant Colonel David Anderson, I'm the Commander of the Sixth Space Warning Squadron and Cape Cod Air Force Station. I am on the DOD side, the only active-duty component. And I've been at the unit for about a year. First off, I'd like to thank you all, especially this wonderful community here for hosting and taking care of my young airmen that live in your communities, their children attend your schools, we frequent your businesses and establishments quite often, some of my favorite restaurants are here, so I thank you all for that and... So I thank you all for that. With that, just a brief reminder of the mission that we have. Our radar actually looks out over the Atlantic Ocean, hoping for something bad never to happen. That would actually be for an enemy country to launch a nuclear missile at the United States, in which we would take that information and actually, within about six degrees of separation, get that information to the President of the United States so he could make a strategic decision on how he would like to respond. Because we don't want that to happen every day, we utilize our radar to track satellites. They're in low Earth orbit. Most of them are only just a couple hundred miles above the surface of the Earth. And in fact, if you've seen the movie Gravity, something along those lines, that's actually what we do every day. We look for small pieces that could potentially hit and strike the International Space Station, as well as ensuring that the International Space Station is kept safe, that the astronauts up there are doing well. So to make that happen, it's not just us here in the part of the United States Air Force doing that. We actually have a Canadian, Royal Canadian Air Force members that are embedded into our unit and have been since we began in the 1980s. And we report all of this information, and I get my care and feeding and orders from Peterson Air Force Base, which is in Colorado, Colorado Springs, Colorado. And they help me ensure that the about 135 people that work at the Pavpaz site are taken care of. About 75 active-duty military members work there at that installation. I have a number of Air Force civilians and then about 50 contractors that all work and live in your community here. We do that job 24/7, 365 days a year. We do not take any time off. And out of that, we do actually track launches. Our radar coverage actually can see all the way down to South America, so we see test launches all the way down from South America all the way up to Canada. Most of the launches come out of Cape Canaveral, where such things as the Space Shuttle used to take off. There's actually coming up in the next couple of days, a Air Force satellite that is going to be going up into space. And we also track small launches out of Wallops Island, which is just off the coast of Virginia. So we see about 20 of those a year. We also, as I mentioned, we see satellites on average about 3 million times a year. Many of those are the same satellites we see over and over again. We just want to make sure that they're where they're supposed to be, so they're not crashing into anything else, because that would actually make for a pretty bad day out in space. Next slide. So just to give you some updates on some of the economic impact that we've had over the last year, we recently completed a nearly $10 million wind turbine completion. If you see those coming across the bridge, coming across either 3 or 25, down, picking up 28, you'll see there's four wind turbines. Two of them actually belong to our installation, and we have actually generated close to $1 million already in energy credits that have enabled us to buy down our electrical bill, in which we are the largest energy consumer on the Cape. Therefore, we're doing our part to try to minimize our footprint. To help with that, our radar requires a lot of cooled water to keep the radar from overheating, and so we recently upgraded our radar, or excuse me, our water chiller, which was actually originally installed back in the late '70s. So we gained some significant energy savings with that project. As well as, as was mentioned with the Army side, we have also recently completed a security upgrade, ensuring that our site remains secure from any type of foreign or adversary or enemy penetration to our site. We're very excited that, starting this summer, we're going to be going through a two-year upgrade to our radar. It will be all internal. You won't see anything externally really changing to our site, but we're getting all of the computers that have been in our facility since back in the '80s are getting upgraded to cutting-edge 1990s technologies. So we're very excited for the government investing in us, and that will, like I said, be bringing in about $125 million over the next two years. And finally, we do have a number of programs in which we get ourselves out to the community. We're very excited to be part of your community, and unless you have any other questions for me, that concludes my portion of this presentation.
Questions? Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, board members. Thank you for having us again. It's always a pleasure to come out and talk to the public. I'm Captain Steve Torby. I'm the commanding officer of the air station at Cape Cod, and I'm going to wear two hats today. I'm going to talk on behalf of Captain Andy Clyburn, who is also the base commander. And last year, I may, I'm sure I mentioned that we were preparing to change how we do business. Our mission essentially hasn't changed at the air station. We still do all, as many of the Coast Guard's 11 missions as we can with our aircraft, but how we do those missions has changed subtly. So if we go to the next slide, the transition that the air station went through to go from the air station to the air station and the base. Now, a lot of, that base word gets used quite a bit. I'm talking about Coast Guard Base Cape Cod, not Joint Base Cape Cod. Very confusing. Base gets used a lot. So the air station divided itself in two pieces August 12th of last summer. Made my job much easier. They took all of the support and logistics entities within the air station that I used to manage, separated that out, and called that a new unit, and that's called Base Cape Cod, Coast Guard Base Cape Cod, and that is now run by Captain Andy Clyburn. I kept all the fun stuff. I kept the airplanes, I kept the helicopters, and I kept the airfield. So all that fun stuff, I still get to manage. So I'm having a great time. But what I thought I'd do, and just, I just want to make sure that's clear, that so now you know that the Coast Guard now has two major commands under, at Joint Base Cape Cod, and it's working very, very well. I wanted to go over a couple of things that happened over the last year I thought you might be interested in. It's always kind of fun to talk about some of the cases we've had. Most of you may remember the blizzard we had last February. I'm sure it's not far from your memories. On Sunday, when the major portion of blizzard hit, we were called to go rescue two Australians who had left Newport, Rhode Island on Friday, and ahead of the storm, trying to beat the storm to go to Bermuda and then ultimately to Australia, in a boat that they bought for $10,000 on eBay. And lo and behold, they made it about to the Jersey Shore. So we got called out on Sunday morning in the middle of the blizzard. We departed the air station, went due south, right over Falmouth, continued all the way over Nantucket, about 200 miles, to go visit the sailing vessel Sedona and its crew of two, who were ready to abandon their vessel. They jumped in the water. We rescued them with a rescue swimmer, who happened to get shocked rather substantially by the rotor, by the static electricity that builds up in the rotor system. Knocked him out, literally. He never lost control of his survivor, and we recovered both those people, both those two people. We brought them back to the air station, and in the lower right-hand corner, you'll see a picture that I took the day, I happened to take that picture. I was that concerned, I actually drove from my base housing over to the air station because I really wanted to be there when they got back. And you could not see a quarter of a mile, probably even less than that, it was actually measured in just a couple hundred yards. In fact, the helicopter, when it landed, the only reason it landed safely is because the ground crew had taken a green sea dye and put it on the end of the runway. That was the only thing that they could see when they landed, because everything was whited out. And they needed the trucks, the snowplow trucks, to guide them back to the parking area. Pretty remarkable rescue. Another real first for us with this, with our new airplane, which is HC-144, up in the top right, was that we medevaced a baby off of Martha's Vineyard. Baby Gabriella was very, very premature, needed assistance immediately, and there was, and the civilian agencies that typically go to the islands and bring them back weren't able to do it, because whenever the weather's bad, they don't go. We do. And we were able to put the baby in an isolate from Tufts University and bring that baby up to Boston Logan, where they, where she was ultimately cared for and saved, and now she's doing just fine. So great rescue. Just a couple weeks ago, we did a medevac off the Queen Mary II, which you may have seen in the paper. Great rescue. There was a marvelous picture you'll see at the end, taken by the 144, 200 miles offshore. Again, that seems to be a very attractive spot for people to get in trouble. But we medevac that patient. That patient had a very substantial heart attack and needed to be, get to higher medical care. We were able to bring that patient up to Boston Logan, oh, I'm sorry, Mass General, land right on their pad, drop him off, and he's doing fine, too. We had the fifth visit by the President to the air station, Joint Base Cape Cod. It is, really takes a cast of hundreds to make sure, maybe even thousands, to make sure that security takes place. He lands his big jet, the 747. It's a remarkable sight to see that on the ramp out on the air station, where he then takes Marine One over to Martha's Vineyard, enjoys a week or two over there, and then comes back. And we enjoy it. In fact, we all get to shake his hand, which is kind of a fun experience. Couple upcoming events I wanted to let you know about is I am working very hard to try to make an airshow possible. Blue Angels have said they want to come. I got to convince my Coast Guard Headquarters that it's the right thing to do. Tons of legal issues that we have to sort through, so fingers crossed that we can get that happen. That will be in the summer of 2016, which will be the centennial of Coast Guard aviation. So we started, I mean, obviously, not obviously, maybe you don't know that, but the people you see in the Orville and Wilbur Wright's first flight were actually Coast Guardsmen from a lifesaving station that he, they asked to help them launch their Wright Flyer. Those are Coast Guardsmen. So that was in 1903. In 1916, we started flying, and in 2016, we hope to celebrate the 100th anniversary with an airshow here. Obviously, we work with all neighboring communities, because it is a crazy time with traffic. It would be in August, late August, just before the Labor Day weekend. So August 26th, 27th, 28th of 2016. Got my fingers crossed. And as Colonel McGurn mentioned, we constantly try to market ourselves at the air station. We have a marvelous facility that needs to be, I think can be developed and improved upon, and we have agreement right now with, we're working on agreement with the FAA and Federal Express to use our approach lighting system to evaluate some new equipment that they like to put in commercial airlines around the world. Right now, FedEx is the only ones that have outfitted their entire fleet with this, and they, that equipment allows them to see through poor weather. And if you've ever been around Cape Cod in the spring and summer, you'll see, you'll notice that the fog gets pretty thick, and they love that stuff. They can't wait to test it. So you may see some very large Federal Express jets landing at the airfield, and that is, in my mind, progress. We have a very expensive runway and a very expensive tower to maintain, and we would love to find businesses that are interested in using that facility and helping us cost share. So next slide. So a little bit about Base Cape Cod. Base Cape Cod is, was stood up on August 12th last summer. They have a number of projects going on, $9 million construction project for new barracks in addition to the 217 housing units that we have currently on base and others that are off-base throughout the Cape Cod area and beyond. You may have noticed that we've also downsized quite a bit. I don't know if you realize, but at one point, we had over 700 houses on base. Now it's down to 217. We've demoed a lot of those old houses that are 1200 to 1300 square feet, really don't meet the needs of most of our members, so we are concentrating on the houses that are in better shape in hopes that maybe someday we'll rebuild and build newer. Kaler Medical Clinic was credited by the Association of Ambulatory Healthcare. That's a milestone for them. Just a wonderful capability to have on base. They take care of all of the Coast Guard and DOD resource, or patients that are in the area. They do a marvelous job, and we love having them so close. I get the best care I've ever had in my military career from these guys. It is so difficult to move away when you have to and then come back. Also, as Frank mentioned, we are consolidating efforts to try to move some of the units that are currently, Coast Guard units that are in Boston, out of that high-cost area to Cape Cod. And right now, I suspect, I think we've got 26 members that are going to come to the Cape this year, as many as 75 to 100 next summer, and maybe even more beyond that. So that's a wonderful thing. Looking forward to that. And finally, I just want to say personally, thank you for you allowing us to have our training event last summer on Falmouth Beach. It was, quite frankly, one of the best experiences I've had while I've been stationed at Air Station Cape Cod. It allowed us to do a realistic training scenario. We do our, all of our survival stations. We practice hoisting to the water. We got people who have never been hoisted, our own people, who've never experienced what it's like to be hoisted in a helicopter. And it really is a wonderful event. We turned it into a morale event as well. So I greatly appreciate your willingness to allow us to do that. It was one of the most special moments I've had as the commanding officer of the Air Station Cape Cod, and it's really only because you allowed us to use your beach, and I appreciate it. You also have the best free dirt on the planet, so I use your dirt pile that you allow people to take dirt from, so thank you again for that. I'll be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Just on the beach use, we did have an issue last year about enough timing to improve it. Are we going to try to do it again this summer? If so, I hope we can.
I would love to. The interesting thing is, it's funny, I get, I got entirely different story from the second-class petty officer that was telling me how things were going. He did come back, and I did find out that apparently we were short on time. He said he had difficulty getting on the schedule. So absolutely, it is, it is, I'd love to do it again, if you allow it. I'd also promise that we will be more forthcoming and give you much more advanced notice. For whatever reason, there was a disconnect between him and I, and I was assured that he was operating with enough time. I think he just couldn't get on your schedule, and then all of a sudden, it did come up, and then we were pressed. Apologize for that. But again, we have that in our hot wash notes, so it won't happen again. The only sad part for me is I won't be here for that. I'm going to retire. But my relief is a very, very competent person coming in. You're going to be very happy with him, and he will, I will make sure that he is very aware of the difficulty last year. Again, I thank, I appreciate your.
The difficulty was only pre. I mean, I think actually, the event itself was received very well, and people were fascinated to know what was going on. It was just the warning.
Well, we will do a better job next year. And that is the, that is the hoist that we did off the Queen Mary II. That boat's almost 1,000 feet long and truly a remarkable ship. But the litter, the patient came up in the litter and the rescue swimmer, and that training that we did largely helps us do that mission. That's the search and rescue mission that we love to do.
Any other questions for the board? Thank you all so much for your presentation. We're very much happy to get the information out there and glad things are going so well. Drink it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Lieutenant Commander retired, Paul Reddell, the Naval Department Deputy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Do you remember about a month ago, we did have our representative to the Cape Cod Commission, Andrew Putnam, had to resign from that. We do now have an opening. It is also the time in which the, his term expired, so it is now a three-year term open to the faculty representatives of the Cape Cod Commission. We do have an applicant, Charlie McCaffrey, who I guess is doing this because it was just his birthday, and this is part of his birthday celebration. If you could please introduce yourself. Tell us why you want to be on the, be our representative to the Cape Cod Commission, and we may have a few questions for you.
I'm Charlie McCaffrey. I live in North Falmouth, Silver Beach. I've been a permanent resident there for 10 years and a summer resident for just shy of 73 years. My whole experience professionally and involvement with the community lends me to want to serve on the Cape Cod Commission. I have a background. My academic training is in urban planning. I have a master's in urban planning from the University of Illinois. I worked for 30-some-plus years for New York State Coastal Zone Management Program, where I was in charge of our efforts to provide assistance to local government to manage their coastal areas and resources, which involved a broad range of issues, all of the issues that are addressed by the commission. So I have a lot of experience working with local governments in addressing these issues. The, we, in that program, had regulatory role. We looked. We looked at major projects from a variety of perspectives under the consistency provision of the Federal Coastal Zone Management Act. My main thrust though was working with local governments in developing comprehensive waterfront planning plans that address the full range of issues, water quality, flooding and erosion, public access, fish and wildlife habitat, commercial fishing, air quality, scenic and aesthetic resources, agriculture. So I'm familiar with all of the issues that are addressed by the commission. I'm also familiar with the type of program, both technical assistance to local government, as you just discussed. I administered that type of program like that in New York. I have also experienced, substantial experience in working within a committee structure. I've been on the management committee of two of the national estuary programs for Long Island Sound in the Pecanic Bay. I'm familiar with similar regional activities in New York such as the Adirondack Park Agency, which is very similar to the Cape Cod Commission. So that's my professional and academic background make the Cape Cod Commission and its work very appealing to me, in which I think I have a lot to contribute. I have also been heavily involved in the, in the Cape and my community. I'm on several boards. I'm Chair of the Building and Grounds Committee at Highfield Hall, where my main emphasis was on restoring the gardens, which has become a major attraction in the area. I've been on the board of the West Falmouth Library and now I'm serving as Chair of their Building Committee and we're undertaking a major community project to renovate and expand the library, raising money primarily from private sources. Recently, I've been involved in the effort to preserve knobs alike through the creation of a new not-for-profit, working closely with the town. I have served for almost nine years, so my term is almost up, on the Town Coastal Pond Management Committee. I have also been on the Executive Committee of the County Coastal Resources Committee, which is mainly a vehicle for towns to exchange ideas on coastal management of coastal resources. It also was a program and I was heavily involved in the criteria for making awards in the Cape Cod Water Quality Restoration Project. That was the project we get funding in this town for the Fish Passage. As I said, I work well in committees and that's important. I also think I understand how regulatory decisions are made. I think the importance in making regulatory decisions is having the necessary knowledge. And that's brought, you need to know what the regulations are, but you also, and I mean, you'd really need to know them. You need to know what the intent of the law was that the regulations are implementing. You need to know what an applicant is proposing, his objectives, actually what he's proposing, but what are his objectives. It could be that a project that may not meet his standard with slight modification can meet his standard and he can still reach his objectives. I think that's very important in a regulatory decision-making structure. You need to know, when a project is proposed, what's the character of the area? Its environmental character, the geography, the history, the culture, the values of the people in that area. You need to know that. And finally, you also need to know the nature of similar decisions, so you know what precedents are for projects that are similar. So I think it's important to have deep knowledge in order to be effective in making regulatory decisions and that's a major part of the, of the role of the Cape Cod Commission. So both the technical assistance and regulatory role is something I'm familiar with, capable of. And I've known, you know, I've spent all my summers on the Cape and I, you know, I love the community, obviously. And I understand the local government. Much of my work has been in working and helping communities and regions develop policy. So I'm a good wordsmith and that's important. I understand the intersect between science and public policy. It's not always simple. And I think that's important in the role of an entity such as the Cape Cod Commission.
Questions from the board?
I think we have just heard one of the best interviews that I haven't heard since I've been a selectman.
Thank you.
I think when you started, I know a little bit about your background and it was just a very small amount. And you continued with most important committees, different states. I would say it would be an honor for Falmouth to have you on the Cape Cod Commission. Charlie, that was an excellent, excellent display of what you've accomplished.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Let me just comment, I don't think we could have a better qualified candidate. Excuse me for my tone.
Thank you.
But I appreciate your willingness to serve our town in this capacity. Thank you, Charlie.
I have one curious question. If you had to choose subcommittees on building or water resources, which one did you go with?
Probably building. I think we've got a lot of people focused on the water resource area. The land use and the development pattern that's occurring on the Cape Cod is important for a wide range of issues, not just one. So.
We won't hold you to that, I was just curious.
Yeah, that's my quick response. If you ask me, you know, an hour from now, I may give you the opposite answer.
Okay, any other questions, comments?
Falmouth is lucky to have you.
Yes, I'd say so.
Well, can't unless we make a motion.
I move to appoint Charlie McCaffrey as Falmouth's representative to Cape Cod Commission.
Second.
The term ending on April 24th, 2018. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none. Thank you very much, Charlie.
Thank you.
Next on agenda is discussion into vote the Consolidated Communications Center site feasibility. We all know that at our most recent town meeting, we were given a direction to put some money towards looking to a site other than the Gus Canty Recreation Center. And we've had some discussion and want to move forward. One of the discussions was about the third floor of the Falmouth Fire Headquarters. Andrew, would you like to add on to this?
Certainly. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. As you've noted, we had a discussion and input from town meeting with a clear direction to avoid what we had deemed to be an important neutral site in regard to the Consolidated Communications Center. The message that we had taken away was that the matter of site neutrality was less significant than we had felt was the case based on the feedback from town meeting. And what remains for this board is to determine, appropriately determine, what would be the most cost-effective approach to take based upon the possibility that you consider our two existing locations for dispatch, that being the fire headquarters and the police headquarters. And in terms of appropriate input from the board, I believe the board would find it most appropriate to have an architect and a telecommunications, architectural and telecommunications assessment to help guide the board on being certain that your costs are appropriate and that both of our existing locations for dispatch operations currently have been appropriately considered and comprehensively considered. Again, given that the determination and suggestion has been that the neutrality of a site is less significant than we had originally recommended.
Comments from the board?
What I might say with my squeaky voice, that I know town meeting heard strong advocacy for using the fire station on Main Street, but we think we need to open this up in the interest of the citizens of the town and take a look at the police station as well so that the decision we make really is going to be the most cost-effective as well as operationally effective site. So I think it's appropriate for us to look at both locations and bring in the experts that can give us a much more accurate cost estimate of what's going to, what's going to be required, as well as the actual conceptual changes that would be required for both sites. Very much supportive of us. Opening this up and looking at both of those locations.
Rebecca?
I was just, if you could outline what type of specialists as the town manager is looking for, what are you thinking about for information for us?
Well, we're looking in two areas. One would be an architectural consultant that has demonstrated experience in this very important area, particularly experience in the Commonwealth, New England and or the Commonwealth. And secondarily, a consultant with expertise in communications technology to give us guidance and assurance that the communications and technology package that would be assembled is an appropriate one and it is one that is best approached in the 21st century.
Okay. And so that would be two different people or you want those skills?
I believe it would be two different firms in all likelihood.
Two different firms, okay. Okay.
I have to admit that my initial inclination in all this was that we really had to go to a neutral site, but I think town meeting was very clear on their message saying that was not necessary, that we needed to be open to sites that weren't neutral and be available for that. And I think without the information as to what the cost would be done by a professional either at the fire station or at the police station, I don't think we could make any correct decision without that really professional information put in front of us.
I also, I think it's a welcome opportunity because we were really lacking in a lot of specifics. The initial analysis was, you know, fairly gross, so I'm hoping to get some specific cost information, an exact list of what's needed and so we can make an informed decision and a good balancing test.
Any other comments? Pleasure of the board?
I'm going to make a motion to authorize the town manager to engage professional services to conduct an architectural and technology assessment for a consolidated communication center, including a cost range for the suitability of the third floor of the Falmouth Fire Headquarters Facility, 399 Main Street, and the lower level of the Police Fire Department, 750 Main Street.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? Mr. Mc Namara?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Matt McNamara. Just a question on the feasibility of the police station. My recollection of the report that was done, I forget how much money we spent on, the police station didn't even have close to the amount of square footage that was required. In fact, the only one that had close to the square footage was the third floor of the fire station. So metal loss, why we throw out the Matrix study that indicated that we needed, if I remember correctly, something like 1,800 square feet. And the fire station, I mean, the police station has, again, my recollection, only about 470 square feet. So I wonder why we're throwing out the original report to come up with this additional feasibility.
Mr. Chairman, if I might, this has nothing to do with discounting the Matrix report. In fact, the Matrix report did not look in depth at the specific locations. We did a, an internal staff analysis on applying the 1,800 square foot standard in various buildings and locations. And indeed, in both the police and fire facility, there is the opportunity to secure sufficient space potentially to make this work. The police department, for reasons that were unique to the flow of matters at town meeting, the police department just did not receive the kind of review and evaluation and advocacy that a location in the fire station did. And so this would balance that out and give a, both a police and a fire opportunity for a comprehensive evaluation by qualified consultants to provide that data and input to the selectmen so that you can make the kind of informed decision that you are responsible to be making.
Thank you. Just one final question, if I could. Did we use the same architects and kind of consultants when we looked at Gus Canty?
We had not done, again, before we were going Gus Canty, we would have had to make sure we had this information done for them also.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None of the ayes have it unanimous. Next item is to discuss the selectmen's meeting calendar. We do have a meeting scheduled for June 1st, 2015.
Can I make a couple comments, Mr. Chairman, if I may? And the members of the board, of course, have copies of a draft calendar. You have what would appear to be three opportunities, if it would be the desire of the board, for potential business meetings. The first, which we've already talked about, Monday, June 1, the 15th and the 29th. And the likelihood is great, given the anticipated press of business, that you may well need all three of those business meetings. You've also traditionally, this board has held your strategic planning retreat on a Saturday morning in June. And it would be my hope, if it's the desire of the board, to continue that important process to move forward in a timely way with your strategic planning discussions and determination. And the, the 6th of June is a little early, but I'm hoping that the board might well consider either the 13th or the 20th for that. You've also received, of course, a suggestion by the planning board for potential joint meeting on Saturday, the 20th. And I know the board has not made any final decision on that. There is the possibility, I'm thinking, that if it would be the desire of this board, given a very busy June, that perhaps that joint meeting could also be considered for a late afternoon, early evening on a weeknight in June as opposed to another Saturday. But again, that would be within the purview of this board, working with the planning board. My concern would be if you're willing to continue your strategic planning meetings, retreats that you have done in June in the past, that you allow me to contact the facilitator that we've used in the past, Jeff Nutting, to determine his availability on either the 13th or the 20th and report back to you, possibly at the same time, considering whether or not you might, that planning board meeting might also be a late afternoon, early evening, weekday meeting as opposed to necessarily a Saturday, although the board may well prefer Saturday. I'm just trying to keep your options open, suggesting, in a biased way, I'll admit that that strategic planning, setting that date and meeting that deadline is very important before the summer arrives because the strategic planning determinations that you make set the tone for so many other things that we do here in town, that I'm hoping that you don't have to move that later into the summer or out of the month of June.
Are these both full day or half day?
Well, it would be half days for strategic planning.
So it's also conceivable, I'm out of pocket on the 13th, but could we do both planning and strategic on the 20th as one option or no?
Well, I think you can, just depending on the workload that the board wants to look at. And if the 13th ends up not being an available date, maybe I could look at the 20th and 27th, just to make certain, to see what, you know, again, the availability of the facilitator would be. I know last year there were some limitations on his time, but we found him to be reasonably effective. I think that's. I think that's been the opinion of the board, but we would obviously follow your lead in that regard.
If at all possible, I like Sue's idea of doing the both on the 20th. Do them two and a half hours in the morning to do the one, and then take a little break, and then do the other.
As long as it's on the 20th. That would be, the date is important, the length of time we're there, I'll handle that. So I could do two meetings in one day on the 20th.
Preferably on the 20th.
Yes.
Yeah, if it would be the desire of the board, perhaps I could check with the availability of the facilitator to see, number one, would he be available on the 20th? And if so...
It sounds like we want to do one of them, at least one of them on the 20th, whether it's a, if he's not available, at least to the planning board on the 20th, and maybe his one would be an evening one. Sam?
I was just going to mention, I think that the high school graduation is on the 6th.
Yeah, we weren't talking about the 6th.
I heard it mentioned once, but it's probably not a good idea. At least I have some young graduates of the high school that I'd like to go with.
13 and 20.
Just in terms of the timeframe, the strategic planning generally takes a full half a day, from, say, 8:30 to 12:30.
Right.
So it's not two and a half hours. I just didn't want to leave you with the impression that it was too short meetings, that the first one does often take the full time that's dedicated to it.
Would the planning board consider a late afternoon on any of the weekdays, and then we would leave the 20th for strategic only?
We'd be happy to inquire about that, and come back to the board on the 1st with...
And starting somewhere between the 9th and go all the way to the end, any of those weekdays that there's a less, you know, that they could do that?
My only point is, I think a joint meeting would be considerably less lengthy than the strategic planning retreat.
Okay. I'd prefer him on the same day, because I think there's an advantage in having the discussion fresh, and then going right to planning. So that's just my personal preference, but I'm open to either.
I think it would be hard for me to shift gears. I'd like to have one one day and the other one another day. I think after a while, when you're sitting there for a period of time.
Sure.
To then pull in another, and it's very serious conversation. It isn't anything light.
If agreeable, we could look at what options might present themselves, and come back to the board.
Okay.
There are five Tuesdays in which the planning board is maybe scheduled to meet.
Correct.
We may be able to take one of their evenings.
Okay.
Sam?
I would certainly like to meet, do our strategic planning meeting first, and then the planning board joint meeting second.
Yeah.
So we would have that foundation to build on.
Very good.
So the 20th, you're looking for a strategic, and then you want a date after the 20th?
Subject only to securing the facilitator services on the 20th.
Yes, I understand that.
And then determine what the planning board's availability would be for either, you know, if we'd be looking at a weeknight potential after the 20th, that would be that week of the 22nd. I think the planning board has a meeting on the 23rd, and/or secondarily, maybe that same afternoon on the 20th, which would make for, you know, a busy day.
Too much.
We can try and avoid that.
We could even, on our no-meeting day, we could consider that if the planning board was available.
I think they have a regular meeting on the 23rd.
Okay.
And we could certainly explore that as a possibility.
All right.
Just to remind everyone that we do have the meetings on the 1st, 15th, and 29th, in which we're probably going to be needing to conduct a number of interviews for all the appointments that are coming up, for terms that expire at the end of June. And also a reminder to people whose terms are coming up, to get their re-applications in, so that we actually have full committees in July.
Okay.
Last week, we had discussed on the, when we have no meetings, was whether we were going to have come as two of us here from 7 to 8. Do we want to sign up ourselves for the 8th and 22nd, just to make sure we have those covered, at least for one month?
I'm not going to do that now.
Okay. Do we want to wait till the 1st?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, if I could ask another question. In the event that the facilitator might not be available on the 20th, would the board want to consider the 27th as a fallback?
Sure.
We'll shoot for the 20th, of course, for the retreat. Okay.
And then if it's the 27th, I know the St. Mark's dedication is that day at 10:00 a.m., maybe we could push it till later in the day, if that's possible. That's kind of just...
Okay, I know he comes from a distance from out of town, generally, and has preferred mornings in the past, but I'm happy to explore that.
Okay.
Sure.
Thanks.
Any other calendar issues to discuss?
Which month?
Any.
Would you want to look at June, tentatively on the calendar you've been given, the 13th and the 27th are the, I think, the key operative dates in July?
Yeah, I think those make sense.
Yep, makes sense.
Okay. And then possibly, if you want to move into the month of August, the 10th and the 24th?
I suspect I won't be here the 24th, but that's one out of five. I would hold off on going any further than that.
Yeah, you're right.
Do we have any selectmen's reports? Sam?
If I could make one. Attended a school committee meeting on last Tuesday, and was pleased to see in the enterprise that they have appointed an interim superintendent in Nancy Taylor, and I thought that was an excellent choice. I've certainly been familiar with Nancy's work within our school district for quite a few years, and I think she'll do an excellent job. That was certainly, I think, a significant move, and I was pleased to see them do that. On Wednesday, I attended the Conservation Commission, and I have to say that we actually did have a full quorum available for them to conduct the hearings, so that was very timely, that we got those two positions in place in time. And then I attended the Conservation, Community Preservation Committee on Thursday, and you heard my comment, they made, they wanted to make the point that they had actually paid for half of, I'm sorry...
Viewworks.
Viewworks, excuse me, and that the purpose that they paid for was to actually be able to prioritize recreation projects, and so they wanted to make sure that that documentation was provided, along with projects that dealt with it. So I'm just forwarding that information on to you. Thank you.
Rebecca?
I went to the hearing at the library concerning the situation with Mr. Cavosa. It was a lengthy meeting, and it was standing room only, and I thought there were many good points. It was the third of three meetings that they have had, and there was a lot of information that had been given previously, and that wasn't the purpose of their evening on that Tuesday night. But it went from 6:30 to 9:30 with many voices being heard. And now the planning board will make a decision whether there'll be a composting area on the Cavosa property.
It's in our packet also to remind everyone that Monday, May 25th, is Memorial Day, and there is this ceremony that will be held on the Green, starting with the walk from the Green at 9:45, and arriving for the ceremony at the library lawn at 10 o'clock. And I'm sure the veterans would be thrilled to have any one of us to be there. We usually assemble right at the bank in front of the Green at 9:45.
9:45 with the Green, okay, and then walk to the library.
Just so.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Just one or two notes, piggybacking on your comments about the Memorial Day, the annual events. Town Hall and Town Administrative Offices, of course, will be closed on that day, Monday, May 25th, for that Memorial Day holiday. And also, it was my pleasure to attend the Chamber of Commerce Annual Meeting this last Tuesday, May 12th, recognizing their Citizen of the Year, for which the selectman had presented a proclamation, and I know that Sue Moran and Doug Jones were able to be in attendance at that as well. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Okay, bring over the business. I'm just going to motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.